Now, how are you doing?
Oh.
Okay, that's sort of right.
Time is four thirty P M. The Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of twelve July twenty twenty-two is called to order. And as those in our council chambers is asking if you have not signed the clipboard by the back desk, if you would please do that before you leave. Also, everyone in the chambers, please put your cell phone on vibrator. We'll call a member, Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Raff.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster is not here yet.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this afternoon, the council chambers, also those that are joining us by Zoom. And remember, you can see our city council meetings on the city YouTube channel and also on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. I just have one announcement for the next two weeks. Our next city council meeting is Tuesday, July twenty-sixth here at four thirty P M. In the council chambers. Are there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the lead of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their solid political standing. For one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I remember two as citizens comments. Is there anyone in the audience or chamber audience here this evening? Like to speak as citizen comment if they are not on the agenda, not related to something on the agenda, you know? Okay, seeing none. I'll go to item number three additions and relations to the agenda. I have three additions and one change. Item number sixteen is Houston Engineering Invoice. Item number sixteen is Houston Engineering Invoice. Item seventeen is Utilities Easement on four hundred and thirtieth Street. Item number seventeen is Utilities Easement on four hundred and thirtieth Street. Item number eighteen is appoint additional election judges. Item number eighteen is appoint additional election judges. And then if we go to item number nine, the second bullet point, please delete the commercial kitchen feasibility study. Please delete commercial kitchen feasibility study and in its place, please put Health Inspector Judy Tabit is here to speak about that. Health Inspector. Any questions? Are there any other additions or additions or changes? Move to approve the agenda with the additions and the amendment to number nine.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four A. Approval of council minutes from June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Four B is approval accounts payable listing. Four C one is financial report, which is in our packet. And four C two is a police report, which is in the packet. Is there a motion to approve? So, all right, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number five is street and park report. We have superintendent Brian Olson with us here this evening. Brian?
All right, thank you. For busy as we've been, I didn't have a lot to report on, but we did get Dusker, if you noticed, we finally got that. Which, again, we've been having troubles getting that for some of the past five, six years. They seem to have discommunication on the train is not communicating well, but so we did get everything gravelled and Dusker has been applying thankfully, so that got them. Probably have noticed we have a cone sitting over on First Avenue or One Way West and First Street right by Steve Foster lives there. That unfortunately, that manhole has started to cave in. It's a storm manhole and it was built out of way back, I don't know, when they used to use the smaller block brick to build it and that is now crushed, so it's gonna, we gotta, I'm gonna take a whole day to kind of get that out and put the rings in and try to get that repaired, so cars don't fall in it, and that's why we have that cone there in case you notice. I was thinking in the streets I had mentioned to you that I was gonna do a fairly large crack seal project this year, which I still am, but it's gonna be a scale-packed project. This week I was working on trying to figure out how to cut about a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of of what I need to do. So, the engineers estimate came in. When they first gave me the estimate, it was two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So, I'm like, we're good. You know, we have that in investments and in savings. When they went up to bid, it came back at three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So, I'll be working to try to get that cut down, so not the whole town will be seeing that as was anticipated. It was a pretty good section of all of the college and was gonna be sealed coated, but that will be scaled back a little bit, just in case you ever wondered why some of it didn't get done. As far as parks go, we've been busy and heck up there. We got the Northwest Park dug out for that point. And the new playground equipment has been installed today, so we'll be working up there to now fill it all back in with B rock and getting it ready to play. Along with with the swing set in Peterson Park has also been installed there and actually just finished up before I came in, so once we get that all cleaned up again and back where it belongs, a couple of pieces of playground equipment for the playhouse, so. Cool, cool, they've been busy. We had, they're in their second set of swimming lessons. And she told me today that the first levels, one, two, three, and maybe it was four, but they're all full. Like, they actually had one that they they had to try to get into the next session because it was just too many kids for for the instructors, so that's a good problem. I don't know if you noticed, but we moved the warming house to the skating rink also, just before the school did their project. So now our plan is with the school to move the skating rink further back, kind of by the sliding hill back there, the pole sliding hill that's there. So it'll be closer together and the warming house can be used if they're sliding or if they're skating, so. But with basketball, we just couldn't keep it where it was and had a ring on top of it, so. And then, yeah, along with getting the parks ready for new playground equipment, hauling dirt, moving dirt, then we had the hockey courts right there in the middle of it, so we were able to get that ready, so that is what I have. You have any questions?
Any questions? Brian, will the warming house be on the asphalt or on the grass?
It'll actually be on the grass, just just behind that mountain hill, mountain whatever it is back there, so.
Any questions for Brian?
How long before you get that ringing?
Well, it's on the agenda for tomorrow, but we were gonna start this afternoon, but I don't dare leave a hole. So, we're gonna try to get after it right away tomorrow morning and try to get that repaired, so we don't have to leave a hole overnight, so. We went from four cones and we're all knocked over down to one, it's not good.
I know, I watched some car plow through them the other night. Roll off the three cones underneath the car.
Yeah, it's no different. I had to replace the stims on our crosswalk signs. Somehow they get hit. I had one that was completely drove over and busted off the off the pavement at sit time. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. So at least one is easier to miss, I hope, but hopefully tomorrow we'll, tomorrow.
Well, I would encourage you to be speedy about this, because those cones are taking a beating, huh?
Anything else?
Any more questions for Brian? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this report?
I'll move in to approve Brian's report.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number six is library, library report, there's two parts. Some of it was in your packet originally, the agenda from July eleventh plus the budget update, and then this afternoon on your desk, you'll find a letter from Mayor Wayne Runnigan and also the minutes from June sixth with the bylaws attached to that. And we have Mr. Runnigan here this evening.
Mayor, thank you. I didn't know if, hang on, the purpose I was out, did you get that spreadsheet in there?
Yes, I'm about.
Yeah.
Then I won't have this out, but you got it. Thank you. Now, we just had our meeting last evening, so we didn't have everything approved, so we did go in there. Package. But besides what was in your package, last evening at the library board, we received a report from the Friends of the Library Group and that their book truck sales have been just exceptional this year with the Friendship Festival and Pelican Fest and the Tuesday events, they've done just really, really well and they're really happy with what they've done. The second thing, we are going to begin to review the library bylaws and update those. I think they were last done in two thousand and fourteen, so we'll be looking at that. And then item three is in regard to the letter that you have Dave Godwin and Cheryl Brown who are appointed as Library Board Budget Committee this year. And I, they requested that I send a letter to request that they meet with the city budget committee. We're not disappointed later this evening, just to discuss the needs of the library and that. The spreadsheet that's attached to that is just a start with data from the ledgers that, at the end of the year, ledgers for each year. It'll just be a basis to start, you know, where we're at with payroll and some expenses. It's not complete by any means, but it's just a start, so that's really all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Runnigan? Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the ledger report? So, I move, second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number seven is Ottertow County Commissioner candidate, and we have Mr. David Helgerson with us this evening. David is running for District Two, which represents our area, and I believe there's five candidates.
There are five, yes.
Oh, yes. David, you'd like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, give me a few minutes to talk to you today, to introduce myself. My name's David Helgerson. And I've been loving Ottertow County Glaze for forty-five years and for the last four, I've been a permanent resident. I live on West Moon田 Lake, which is about twenty minutes east of Pelican Rapids. As a freshman, I'm running for the District Two County Commissioner seat. And my background, I have a business and healthcare background. I worked in the insurance industry for ten years. And around that time, my wife decided to go back to medical school, so I left my career to support her and also to be the primary caregiver to our two young daughters at the time. And also during that time, I founded a medical document company. I still wanted to have my hands in business somewhat, so I started that business and I still run that today after twelve or thirteen years. So I've had the experience of managing people, supervising employees, working budgets, meeting payroll. And I hope to take my life experiences, now that my wife and I are emptiness, emptiness, I have a lot more time. And over the last couple of years, what I've seen with the attacks on liberty, freedom and everything else, I just felt I had to try to do something. And I thought that working locally, I could be effective in doing that. So, my goal is to stand up for individual and business liberty and freedom and give a voice to the citizens, which I think at times the current commission doesn't do that great a job of, so I hope to improve that as well as many other things. I'll take any questions you have, have any, but I also have my contact information to hand out if that would be appropriate.
Any questions for Mr. Helgerson? Any questions?
If you have them later, you can hold me many ways. I apologize, something you needed getting with this in the mail to yourself. Mr. Fraser, you've got this for me a few times, so you probably don't need more unless you want. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, for coming to introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Item number eight is twenty twenty-two Greater Minnesota TED Program Grant, and we have Mr. Bob Sleeman Apex Engineering with us this evening. There was a handout in your packet, item number eight, and Bob, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, makes council staff. Yeah, I just wanted to give a short presentation here. There's a grant program that is available. It's called the twenty twenty-two Greater Minnesota TED Program. TED stands for Transportation Economic Development. So basically what the breakdown is, is there's two million dollars available for projects in the years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. This is, this money is focused for infrastructure improvements within mained out right away. So the project coming up here with Pelican Rapids, Truck Highway fifty-nine and one eighty-four doors, we thought this would be a good opportunity to maybe take a, and submit an application, try to get some funds for for some of the city's portion of the cost of those projects. As far as the scoring of this grant program, there's an economic development portion for it. There's a transportation benefits portion, and there's also a percentage of non-mained out funding, so. Again, pretty straightforward. I'm assuming I'll be working with Don and putting an application together. We did submit a letter of interest, which is due at the end of July, and then the actual application is due September second, so. Hoping it's pretty straightforward, and I just wanted to let the council and staff know that we're gonna go ahead and try to get some more more grant dollars for the city's portion of this project moving forward, so.
I assume you're looking for a motion to move forward with the grant application?
Yeah, I think that would be nice. Eventually, there will be a resolution that's required as well, but that would come out over your time, so, yeah, I mean, if we could get a motion to go ahead and pursue, pursue the funds for this.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
When's this due?
September second is the application headline.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, dear Tom.
Thank you.
Item number nine is local foods, local places. Ellie is here, and there's also two bullet points under that. The first one is Partnership for Health Letter, which was in your packet, which was authored by Patrick Hollister. I don't know, did you want to say something to this letter badly?
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. Thank you for including my letter in your agenda packet. I also want to read it verbatim, it's the record. I understand now that the commercial kitchen feasibility study has been removed from this evening's agenda. I didn't know that at the time I wrote this. However, the other ninety-five percent of the letter is still relevant, so bear with me here. July sixth, twenty twenty-two, dear mayor and city council, I understand that the city council will be receiving a presentation of the commercial kitchen feasibility study at your regular meeting on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Please include this letter with that item in the council agenda packet for July twelfth. Partnership for Health is aware that the city has been approached by a private entity to purchase the former Senior Citizens Center property. We would like to emphasize two potential public benefits if the property remains in the city's ownership. Number one, the commercial kitchen feasibility study identifies the former Senior Citizens Center as one of several properties that could serve as a commercial kitchen. Selling the building to a private entity at this time would preclude further exploration of this possibility. Number two, the former Senior Citizens Center building is next to the city's new trailhead for the Heart of the Lakes Trail, Pelican Rapids to Mickwood State Park to Perm, and there is interest in the community in eventually remodeling the building to allow trailhead users to access the restrooms even when the rest of the building is locked. Again, selling the building to a private entity at this time would preclude further exploration of this possibility. Waiting to decide on whether to sell the former Senior Citizens Center building to a private entity until the community has had time to fully explore the above possibilities would prevent premature foreclosure on an opportunity that the city might regret later. Sincerely, Patrick C. Hollister.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick? Thank you. We removed the commercial kitchen feasibility study bullet point, but Judy Tabit is here to speak regarding health inspection.
Judy Tabit, Local Foods, Local Places. We apologize for the change in venue for the kitchen feasibility study, but the Local Foods, Local Places has not met for us to process that report yet. And we felt that was important for us to look at that before we could present it to you and to the public, so I believe that Joey, who did the feasibility study, will be able to come to a city council meeting to present the feasibility study, so that's why there was a change there. But I am requesting permission to ask, his name is Bruce Jessler. He is the inspector for Ottertow, Ray Wilton and Beckford County, Ford County area. He is a health inspector out of Morehead, Minnesota, and I would like permission to contact him to have him look at the senior citizens building to find out if it is possible to have both the meals, the seniors' meals, the nutrition services and the commercial kitchen at the same time. Because I think if we can't do that, we need to move on. I mean, it's, it's, we need to have that expected. And then, Mr. Foster asked me the other day, he said, well, what about that in this wonderful city hall? Would that be a commercial kitchen? And I said, oh, I don't know. Maybe I can have the person look at that building too, cookies and tummy. So I would like permission to contact his health inspector from Morehead.
Yeah, is this pro bono or is there?
I don't think there's any cost to it. And that's one of the things that I think they have to do is they have to come and check this.
And I think if he can answer the question as to whether both of those activities can happen in the same commercial kitchen, if he can answer that, that would be good.
Yes.
There was a comment out there that they both can't, you can't use the commercial kitchen, the community commercial kitchen for preparing the senior food program, food too, so we don't know where that came from, but it'd be nice to make that notification.
Is there a motion for Judy to proceed with the health health inspector to inspect the building?
I'll make a motion to have at least contact him and find out.
If there's costs involved or what?
If no cost involved, I make a motion that you have him go.
And I would like to invite, like, Don and Brent at the same time, and maybe somebody else from the local foods group that would also come and be involved in that process.
Is there a second to Kurt's motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? Discussion.
With the kitchen in there for meals on wheels, aren't they inspected now?
They are grandfathered in by inspections, but it is not to code for a commercial kitchen for a new venue, if you can explain the right. They have plywood cupboards in there, which are not to code. If, if they, if they moved out of there and somebody else moved in, there, it would have to be re-inspected and there would be a lot of changes that the plywood cupboards, the wood cupboards would have to be removed. There isn't a lot of other stuff in there maybe that needs to be changed. There is a hood, the stove is probably the code. Most of the equipment is ANSF in there, which is the National Food Scanner, which is fine, but the wood cupboards are the problem. They've got the refrigerators and freezers. Most of the equipment that's in there right now is owned by Nutrition Services. Except, I'm guessing that the seniors own the hood. The hood is just an exhaust hood. It is not one with a fire extinguisher.
Probably takes it out of code for a community kitchen.
Depending on what, if you're not gonna be fat-fiving here, it might not have to have the fire system.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Item number ten is Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails membership consideration. That was also in your packet. I believe Don is gonna speak.
Right, this is something that was mailed to the city and looking at the possibility of the city joining the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails organization, I believe the information that I put in the packet kind of shows that the city's portion of this, if the city wants to join, it was only like a hundred fifty dollars a month, a year, but it kind of laid out, you know, what they do as an organization in advocating for different, you know, trail funds throughout the state of Minnesota, so it's not just an Ottertow County thing, it's a statewide thing. And so I just thought I'd fill it up and for the council and see if it's something they want to do. If you guys are wanting to do it, then I'll make sure that it works into the body. It's not a lot of money, so.
What is the council's wish?
We're still part of the tourism package, right?
No, no, we're not at this time because of the COVID requirements of the facility, but from the discussions with them, if you recall, you know, they were going to the state was going to look at the possibility of once, you know, kind of COVID eases up and everything, that they would just implement the tourism center back in the historic city hall in Pelican, but right now it's not.
Also, have any interested joining?
I think it's good to have our name on a map somewhere.
Well, the one thing too is, is, you know, there's still that push out there to bring the US twenty trail right through Pelican Rapids from over the north coming down fifty, or from Morehead, you know, coming over, coming up through Pelican Rapids, back down, and then honestly, for this fall. So, there's a lot of trail discussion out there that involves Pelican Rapids, and this is just one more, I think, way to keep Pelican Rapids conversations going and place statewide trails.
I move to join.
I'll second. We have a motion, second, to join, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number eleven is executive search timeline discussion. There was a handout in your packet and also there's a couple other sheets that were put on your desk this evening from David Rowan Associates Company, and Don, you're gonna speak to that?
Right, during the packet was the timeline that was revised and sent over once the council approved the proposal. And the highlight is to point out the highlighted dates on that, which are on the screen also. The highlighted dates are the dates that actually are gonna require council activity or participation at council level. You already did that on June twenty eighth. July twenty-first is one exception in a sense, because they're just here doing information gathering, but where the council has to participate is through But where the council has to participate is through the interview, or the information gathering process. So, and that's one of the things that I sat in front of your stations was two different things. One was a, a schedule, just show kind of open time slots on Thursday, July 21st. They're gonna be here and they want to interview each individual councilman. They're gonna talk to city staff, they're gonna talk to other individuals that I'll reach out to, try to get some representation from the chamber, from the EDC, from Merk Talon Main Group or whatever, just, just a variety of individuals, maybe store owners or whatever. And fill up that list or that time slot so that when they're here on the 23rd or 21st, they'll be talking to each one individually. And what they'll kind of be talking about, the second thing I sat in front of you, is the, what they refer to as the administrative discussion guide. This is really what they're gonna wanna talk to every individual above. You know, what, what do you see as the characteristics of the next city administrator? And, you know, you can read here, some questions at the bottom, it kind of helps start that thinking in terms of what you'll be talking about. So what I'm gonna be needing from each one of you, and I, I figured I'd have you guys basically sign up first since, since you're the elected officials, but I'm gonna be, if you, if you know when you might want to do it on that date, write your name in, you can just leave it here and I'll pick it up. Otherwise, you'll probably be hearing from me tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day, trying to pick a time on that date where you guys can come in. They'll be here at city hall. I think it's just one individual actually. But they'll be here and you'll come in and just sit down, have a conversation with them, and they'll get out the door and the next person will come in, so. Any questions about all that?
I see on the November 2nd, they want a special meeting.
Yeah, good point. There's two places on here, once in August, on August 23rd, and then on November 2nd, where it's actually based on the schedule of getting things done, they're gonna have to require or need two council's special meetings called. And so it really, at two different times, you have a regular, maybe council meeting on the 16th, and then the following week, you're gonna have a special meeting on the 23rd, the same thing going on October 26th, possibly through November 2nd, if the 26th happens to be a, a normal meeting day, I'm not sure. But that's gonna, that's, that's kind of required in order for them to get through all the tasks that gotta be done, to get to the end goal, so. And then if, you know, if there's any kind of concern to whatever with the schedule, we can always, we'll have plenty of time to talk to, that would bump that to, you know, on the 21st or whatever. If you guys are meeting with them and that's a concern for you, you can sure bring that up also. That's, this is the schedule, doesn't mean it's set in stone, but it could have some revisions to it. I was thinking about, try and put somebody in the chair before December is the goal. Any questions for Don? Yeah, Don? If we have those special, like the meeting on the 23rd, do we, can we plan it ahead so that we take the 30th council meeting and just roll it into that 23rd? Also in November, I mean, can we just roll that into the regular council meeting? Yeah, that's a good question because I suppose, because, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a closed meeting, it's a special meeting, and a special meeting can be whatever is on the agenda. So, you know, obviously they're looking to have those things talked about that you see on the list at that meeting, but we also could potentially set the regular meeting for that time also, as we get closer to the end of the month meeting here in July. We'll have a better picture of what might have to be talked about in August, other than this stuff. We could possibly do that, a special meeting as opposed to having three meetings that month. Actually, I don't think we're having three that month already because didn't we change the timing on August?
Yeah, I need it back to the 16th.
Yeah. So we're having one on the 16th of February right now.
Shouldn't we find out how much time this is gonna take before we change? If this is gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah. I could have that conversation with him to find out, you know, at that special meeting, how much time it takes. But, you know, it really depends a lot to, on, you know, the information that you guys will be given at, by that point, so that you can look at it and, you know, he's gonna have a profile put together that has the job description, which I sent them, and we have salary ratings in it, go through the hiring process. So some of those things, like the job description, you guys will have to, you know, approve it from what this says. The profile, and the profile has to do with, with, if you remember that packet of information with proposal, there was that, that fake city profile that was in there, all them pages about the community, the position and all that, and all that stuff. That's what that profile is all about. So you'll have an opportunity to go through and look at all that and then revise it and approve the profile that'll actually be sent out to all the applicants. So that's part of that, that meeting. But yeah, we can find out how long typically that meeting takes and then see if it makes sense to add other things to that meeting, maybe normal would have to go through.
Any other questions for Don? That's all we gotta do is choose what time we want to be interviewed.
Right. And then, you know, just like I said, you know, give you guys the slots first and then we give him the staff and others to...
Okay, thank you. Item number 12 is 2023 budget committee appointment. In the past couple years, Councilman Foster and I have served on the Budget Committee with Administrator Canada, and I would choose to serve again this year.
He's not looking at you.
Would you like to serve again, Councilman Foster?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. So is there a motion to, motion second to approve Councilman Foster night of the Budget Committee? Discussion? 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 Hearing not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close the same? Carry. Item, let's go down to item number 16, Houston Engineering invoice. Don?
After the packet was sent out, and actually it was yesterday, I got two invoices from Houston Engineering for the dam work. And I'm gonna give you two numbers. The first one is for Project 88, the dam, and that invoice is for $21,446.75. And this is the continuing work they're doing on the plans and specs and all that stuff. This, $21,446, you guys approve it, and then what I do with it is I turn around, we pay it, but I turn around and submit it for reimbursement at a hundred percent from the DNR. So there's that one. And then the second invoice is for $17,121.31, and that's related to the bridge, the bridge that we got the grant for, that's gonna go over that area once the dam is removed. And that one is not one, that one basically won't be covered by the DNR, it'll be covered by the grant, but there's some discussions that we're gonna be having as we're waiting for the grant documents to come, or the document of the DNR, and regarding this one too, and how this, how we wanna handle this one, so that we can make sure they'll get it covered one way or the other, if you grant or if you can't.
What was that amount again?
Seventeen thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay. Can these be approved in one motion?
Sure.
Okay.
The second invoice, is that for the placement of the foundations?
Right, right now it was basically just the work on what they've been doing for, yeah, that's a good point. The majority of that was a $14,000 bill for soil borings that had to be done by Bronn in order to do the geotechnical for it. So that was over $14,000, almost $15,000 of it, and then a couple thousand for the engineers involved in putting all that document together, so.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same? Motion carry. Item number 17 is utilities easement on 430th Street.
This is one that I added today because I just got it back. This is a permanent utility easement that's needed for the, the water sewer mains that were extended from the industrial park up to the county garage site. And it's an easement between Dan and Steve Aggie properties and the city. And it basically points out the area in the roadway which happens to be owned by Dan and Steve Aggie, because it's, it's a road, but that road was basically giving to, given by the Aggies for 430th to go there. So it's really truly their land, and so the easement had to be done. We originally had one put together for the township, thinking it was a township road, but it's not, it actually is owned by DSC properties. So Apex Engineering, as well as the city attorney, the city attorney, and then myself kind of put this easement together, and I met with Dan, Eddie, he had a couple days to look at it, he signed off on it back in the day. So I know you guys haven't seen it, but it's, like I said, the city attorney and stuff has, has been involved in drafting this thing, so.
I'm not sure where you're talking about.
The whole, the whole, the roadway from where, where they started digging up to put the water sewer mains in the industrial park underneath the gravel road, up to the site for the new county garage, all that roadway that we're putting water sewer in, that they've been doing for the last couple weeks or whatever, we didn't have an easement in place for that work. We were, Dan, Dan, Aggie said, well, we understand why you guys are putting it in, just work on the easement, but we're not gonna hold up the work. So as they were doing that work up there to get the mains up to the garage site, we've been working on an easement, so.
Why did they go north into the field? Let's have a look.
Why did they? I don't know that they did necessarily. If there was, if there was a little bit of a stub, because there was, there was, I think in the plan, at one point, there was a little bit of a stub that kind of went into the ditch right across from the intersection, just to have it there in case there's any development in the distant future, that would create a potential to have the water sewer extended into Manic's area that Aggie's own right now and to go for something like that.
So this is also a permanent?
Yeah, it installs it and then it gives us permanent easement to maintain it, whatever, whatever means we have to do to it. So I need approval for easement to be executed by Danielle and the mayor.
And we approve the utility easement to 430th Street.
I got that.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same? Motion carry. Item number 18, appoint additional election judges. Danielle?
Yeah, I have three more judges I would like to appoint, is Andrew Broderick, Esther Broderick, and Kate Andrews, and they're at the same $13.99 something hour.
I move to approve.
I'll second. Motion and second, discussion? 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 Hearing not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same? Motion carry. Thank you. Item number 13, administrator report.
Since the last meeting I held, the department had a meeting and we started our discussion about submitting their budget request for 2023, put the agenda together, except for the meeting today. I attended a virtual meeting, a monthly virtual meeting with Otter Hill County's Community Development Authority regarding community updates, worked on this utility easement for the county garage. I've been spending some time with David Drone Associates regarding the search, executive search documentation, most of the stuff that they're looking for, information about Pelican Rapids, et cetera, et cetera. They basically send the request to me, so if I have an opportunity to pass some of that on to Danielle, I will, but right, so far it's pretty much all, everything I have electronically on my computer, which has been pretty nice, and just send it back as attachments to them, so. And then I've started the conversation with the city attorney regarding some dilapidated buildings in town. And just so that you guys know, up front, it's this brown building across the street which has to be dealt with, everybody's gotta agree to that. And then there was also a small little house that is over on Second Street that was in this process once before, and when Greg Larson was the city attorney, and it went through all the publications and the whole ball of wax, and then nothing ever ended up happening about it. And so my meeting with the city attorney today on that property was, here's what's already been done, can we just pick up from there and move forward? We have to just take a few steps back and do some things over again. Because we really were at a point where there was a publication that was done, everybody had been notified that we could find that the property belongs to, I think, a trust and there's several of the big rules in that trust. And so the ones that Attorney Larson could find were served, and the rest of them were served through just a newspaper publication. And so that was all done, but then that's where it kind of stops. We gotta figure out, do we have to go back and re-serve all them, or what has to happen so we can do something with that building too? Ultimately, the goal would be, hopefully for them to fix it up, do something with it, but I think it's beyond repair. And the last time I went through this, we got to the point where the courts allowed us to tear it down. Unfortunately, when we do that, we can, you know, charge the property, the bill, but they just walk away from it, so. But in the long run, yeah, it costs the city something to get rid of it, but it's gone. Now we don't have an eyesore anymore, so I'll continue to work on that with the city chairman. And there may be others, but I just, I've been basically just looking at two right now.
In those cases where the house is, we go through the legal process and tear the house down, does the, do they still, do they still own the land, the property?
Yes, yeah. And what, what happened the last time is, you know, we got all their bills and I believe we sent them a bill, and never heard from them, so ultimately, I believe Danielle certified it to the property taxes. And so now here's this huge, you know, several thousand dollar bill that's on their property taxes along with their property taxes, and they just, at that point, in that particular case, I think they just let it go.
After the state.
Yeah, they just don't pay the property taxes or pay us, and that ultimately goes back to the state on taxes. Now, having said that, what we do know is if somebody wants to come and buy that lot, it's potential, there is a potential that the city could slap that back on and try and recover that or some of that or whatever the case may be. In that particular case, it would just be good if someone would buy it. I can't remember if it's a conforming law or not though, but buy it, put outside, that would be good for the city too. But this particular case, the one I'm talking about on the second, it's a 55, like a 50 by 50 lot, it's too small for a meeting. So that gets, if we ever get to a point where that house gets knocked down and removed, best thing that could happen there is maybe a money property order with buy-in and maybe do something.
Is that northwest, northeast?
Northwest.
Okay.
So that's my report.
Any questions for Don? I have a number 14, mayor report, just a few items of the past month on June 29th. Held conversations with the mayor at Historic City Hall. I did sign that letter of support for broadband for our, not only for our area, but for rural Minnesota, which Otter Hill County was here at her last council meeting and made that presentation. I took in the air guard 4th of July... Partook in the airguard 4th of July parade and also the parade, Pelican test parade here in town. July 6th, conducted a radio, radio interview with station KKWE up in Callaway, Minnesota regarding activities and events in Pelican Rapids during this summertime. And also met with, or communication with Jody on the commercial kitchen study regarding deleting it from this evening's agenda and waiting till our next city council meeting because it wasn't complete at this time. And then yesterday, met with Administrator Sova to review the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Any questions?
I probably go off the next meeting, I should have brought myself a little bit. Are you going to be here?
No.
Well, I, I just may have though.
Okay, okay, so two of you won't be here.
Okay. Well, you can't do it, and, uh.
Okay, thank, I appreciate that.
Give us plenty of time to consider something.
Okay, seeing all the business on this evening, the agendas are motion approved? Motion second, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Because in FYI, they are working on the White Trail.